Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting in order. Misty, would you call the roll, please?
David Burris. JR Huddleston.
Here.
Debra Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Linda Varval.
Here.
Melanie Wilson.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you join me in the Pledge of Legions? So the next thing on our agenda is the Oath of Office for the newly elected officials. And I believe I'm first on the list.
Does anybody have any objection to doing all the councils together?
No.
No.
Go on up. You're not yet.
Okay. Is ready to write and repeat after me? I, Bob Nelson.
I, Bob Nelson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The codified laws of the state of South Dakota.
Codified laws of the state of South Dakota.
And the ordinances of the city of Hot Springs.
And the ordinances of the city of Hot Springs.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform all the duties of my office.
Perform all the duties of my office.
I will base my decisions on what is best.
I will base my decisions on what is best.
For the government and citizens of the city of Hot Springs.
For the government and citizens of the city of Hot Springs.
And not on any personal gain.
And not on any personal gain.
Or not under any direct or indirect obligation to others.
And not under.
Or not under.
And not under.
Any direct or indirect.
Any direct or indirect.
Obligation to others.
Obligation to others.
Thank you, congratulations. And Larry Pratt, Bill Lukens, JR Huddleston, and Melanie Wilson.
Remember what she swore to.
Huh?
Remember what she swore to.
Well, I'll try not to put your words together. I'll just stop after "I" and just say your own name. You'll raise your right hand if you have to. I, Bob Nelson, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The codified laws of the state of South Dakota.
Codified laws of the state of South Dakota.
And the ordinances of the city of Hot Springs.
And the ordinances of the city of Hot Springs.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform all the duties of my office.
Perform all the duties of my office.
I will base my decisions.
I will base my decisions.
On what's best for the government.
On what's best for the government.
And citizens of the city of Hot Springs.
And the citizens of the city of Hot Springs.
And not on any personal gain.
Not on any personal gain.
Or not under any direct.
Or not under any direct.
Or indirect obligation to others.
Or indirect obligation to others.
Thank you, congratulations. I have two ultimatum, so you can keep one. Please sign and return the other, and a certificate of election for each of you. I need just the top one back, everything else you can use. Thank you.
You read it slower for them.
I did. I kind of felt weird stopping after government.
All right, we're on to election of President and Vice President of the 2022 through 2023 Council. Does anybody want to nominate anybody for the President?
I nominate Bill Lukens.
Second?
I nominate Debra Johnston. I'd like to second.
Any others? Any discussion? Misty, would you poll the council?
Melanie Wilson? You're going to answer if you are going to vote for Bill Lukens or Debra Johnston.
Bill Lukens.
Linda Varval.
Bill Lukens.
Craig Romi.
Debra Johnston.
Larry Pratt.
Debra Johnson.
Debra Johnston.
Bill Lukens.
JR Huddleston.
Bill Lukens.
You have four to two, Bill Lukens, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Nominations for your Vice President.
I nominate JR Huddleston, second.
I'll nominate Craig Romi. He's been on here a long time.
I decline. Thank you, though.
I was going to do it before you nominated me. It was on my mind to nominate you anyway.
All right, so Craig, you decline?
Yeah.
All right. So we have one nomination of JR, any others?
Nominate Dave Burris. I'll second. Can I second that? No, I can't. Already did nomination.
Second.
Any others? Misty, would you poll the council, please?
Yes.
JR Huddleston.
Dave Burris.
Debra Johnston.
Dave Burris.
Bill Lukens.
Dave Burris.
Larry Pratt.
Dave Burris.
Craig Romi.
Dave Burris.
Linda Varval.
Dave Burris.
Melanie Wilson.
Dave Burris.
I'm not a bit hurt.
I have a question, who was the Vice President last year?
Dave Burris.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. I forgot. We want continuity.
So council, Bill will be your council President for the next year, and Dave will be your Vice President. Thank you, everyone. Conflict of interest, remind everyone, if you have something that you feel you shouldn't be voting on, please let the council know. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the June 21 council meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 21 council meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the bills in between?
Make a motion to approve the bills in between, $144,594.09.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the current claims.
I make a motion to approve the current claims of $332,435.69.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit cards.
I may make a motion for the Wells Fargo credit card claims of $13,657.68.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Takes us to our 2021 Audit Review. Tracy Hansen with Kettle Forsterson.
Good evening, I spoke with the group earlier to talk through the details of the audit process. A thank you to the finance office and the personnel there for their assistance in that process. We talked through the fact that the accounting standards were consistent for 2021. We did have a new audit standard that changed the auditor's report, we talked through those changes. We talked through a few financial highlights, and then we talked through the fact that there are two findings. We discussed how those findings impact the city, and overall, the audit was a successful process. You were issued a clean, unmodified opinion. So that was a brief summary of what we discussed. I will take any questions or concerns.
Counsel, any questions?
It's getting a little easier every year.
When will the final report be available for the public?
I would say, if not by the end of the week, beginning of next.
All right.
And I guess just for the public's information, as always, that will be available for your full 46-page review on the city website.
And the city's in good, sound financial position?
We reviewed the financial information, and you know, as of the end of 2021, we talked through the fact that most funds had a positive result for the year, and you know, what the future holds, and current financial situations change each day, but yes.
And I guess the highlight, again, for the public's benefit, the highlight of the report is that sound financial controls are in place.
Processes, accounting controls, segregation of duties are in a position where we're not making any recommendation for improvement.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Communications from the public.
Thank you, have a safe trip.
Wes Grimes, Ward 3. On your agenda tonight, I see your latest officer you just went and seen graduate there at school has resigned already. When are you guys going to maybe think about doing something a little different? Because what you're doing is not working, and the taxpayers getting kind of fleeced every time we send someone there, and we don't collect that $10,000 back. Your chief keeps hiring these unqualified, uncertified officers, and they come here and they leave. I mean, I'm at a loss, why would you continue with this process? Why wouldn't you try to hire certified officers and someone that might possibly want to be an officer? I hope that she's got to pay something back on this, I really do.
Me too.
She doesn't.
Okay. This is just, it's a cycle, in the last four or five years, it's getting ridiculous.
Yes.
The taxpayer is just, ultimately just being fleeced.
You said the chief keeps hiring, the turnover isn't just the current chief, it's been through the last two chiefs, but you're...
Yes, I'm well aware.
I'm not trying to play it off, Wes, you're absolutely right. To the point that the officer that's resigning does not need to pay it back. The contract that the city typically asks an officer to sign before they go to the school, the academy was not signed, and that's the reason that we don't have anything to hold over that individual to get the money back.
$10,000 could go a long ways for parks and various things, I mean, it truly could. Thank you.
I'm Rachel Witcher, 274-50 Galveston Heights Circle. I wish you guys would have named that a shorter name for the street. Takes up all the room whenever you fill out your address. Anyway, I just have a question about handicap parking. In this town, it seems with the construction going on, we have no handicap parking anywhere, really. And you know, this is going to be going on for a few years, and I'm wondering if we could give some thought to that. I have the Hair Care Center, and the handicap parking there was in the police station, that's gone. And then there's handicap parkings down along River Street, there's one down in front of the, I don't know what you call the building, it used to be Blessings Antiques years ago, down by where, and the vault burned down, and anybody parks there, nobody, there's no parking open for handicapped people. And in front of the post office, there's none, you know, I know that they're supposed to, that they've been on where they're working on Jennings now, so they can't park there, but you know, could we put some temporary parking places for people that are, there's a lot of people in wheelchairs and walkers, and like the, in front of the post office, there's, I don't know where people park to. It's just a free-for-all everywhere. So anyway, I was just wondering if you guys would give some thought to that, I don't know if the state decides these things, or the city decides these things, but it's a problem, there's a lot of people that rely on handicap parking.
Okay.
There's one across the street from City Hall. It might be hard to see.
It's probably covered up with mud, I...
It's there, I saw it.
Well, maybe we need to spray it off, because when you drive through town, you don't see any handicap parking spots. And I get a lot of feedback about that from everybody, I'm like, well, I'm trying to put it out there, that you know, maybe we could check into that and stuff, so. But if you drive through town, there's people with not handicap parking license plates parked where the blue has really faded off, like the one down in front of that, what do you call that building, it used to be Blessings Antiques.
Yeah.
It's the Fargo.
Fargo Mercantile.
Fargo Mercantile, yeah, I couldn't think of that, okay. Down in front of there, I thought there was one closer to City Hall, on the City Hall side, between there and the movie theater, I'm not sure, but I don't, you know, it's where we're off, whatever, but I've just kind of made note of that, that we don't have handicap parking anymore, and this is going to go on for a few years, so.
I agree.
Our citizens need to kind of be thoughtful about that.
Good point.
I agree with you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Rachel, before you take off.
Sure.
You had said you weren't sure who was responsible for the handicap parking, the state or the city. The state does determine those, they built more into the new road design, and that's not, as you said, not going to happen for a couple of years. But the note that I made is the city meets with the contractors every Tuesday morning, so I can raise that as an issue about, you know, some additional handicap parking during the construction. At 10 o'clock, the contractor opens that meeting up to the public to raise concerns.
I know, I'm always booked, I forget. But I just didn't know who is, or if I need to call the state or whatever, but it's something we need to think about, because there's a lot of people that rely on those, and we don't have any anymore. And it's just a free-for-all where everybody's parking, people park in front of the movie theater where it's yellow, you know, and I understand there's, well, now that they're getting that stuff done along the river, that's opening up a lot of parking again over on that side and stuff, and, but it's just a headache, and we got a few years ahead of us, I guess, so.
If things go well for the contractor that's been drilling the micro piles, they will be done the end of this week.
Yeah, as they move on down, you know, but at first, it took up a lot of parking spaces, so that's helped that they're moving on, so.
Yes.
But for handicapped people, I had a customer park over by the Legion Club, and he wheeled her clear over in a wheelchair on a cloudy day. And you know, we need to think about that, there's a lot of people in this town that rely on handicap parking and stuff like that. I used to be one of them, thank goodness I healed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Donna Cashwell, 640 South 6th Street, just down the street. This is a cute little town, historical and everything, but are we doing anything about this grass growing onto different people's property that's like knee-high, houses that are for sale, that isn't the realtor responsible for cutting the grass? People's vehicles parked, I mean, we're talking vehicles that aren't working all over the place? I mean, you drive around this town, and it's kind of a, not a good image to have, so. I wasn't sure if, who's responsible for that, but I would hope that somebody would be responsible for the upkeep of properties.
I was making a note while you were chatting, the city has hired a code enforcement officer that's identified a number of properties that have weed problems, have car problems. It hasn't worked out as well as we'd hoped that it would.
The first group of mailings, there was like 144 letters sent out for ordinance violations, and after those, just a couple months ago, they did a tally, and we had like a 60% compliance improvement with those 144. And they've sent out the next batch for second notices, and so it's a process, it takes a while, but we're working on it. But yeah, I have an argument against, my neighbors even across the street are mowing, they mowed their regular yard, but the yard right along the, what do you call? The boulevard, and this other little nook, and that's what you see from the street, and they don't touch that, and so I'm about ready to paste an ordinance on their door. So yeah, we have to kind of put a little peer pressure on people as well, I think.
The problem I see with that is this code enforcement officer we hired only comes town once in a while, and the grass and the weed grow with the rain.
Yeah.
So we need our city building inspector, code enforcement, to go around and take care of the grass problems in Hot Springs, is what we need. There's five of them that took oath tonight, saying that they're going to uphold that. Ordinances, so there's eight of us, so we need to do that. We're working on it.
Anyone else? Kathy?
I'm Kathy Rinn. Thank you for the new ordinance for fireworks.
What's your address, ma'am?
310 South 16th Street.
The fireworks ordinance?
It was amazing.
It was?
Thank you.
Thanks. Big difference.
So thank you for the show, or the ordinance? The ordinance. Okay, just wanted to make sure I got it right.
Yeah, there was a huge...
Yes, the show was amazing.
Yeah, there was a huge difference from last year to this year with the quality of life in town without the big booms for, what was it, two weeks? I think Rapid City has it going on until the 10th.
A lot of thank yous for the ordinance, and job well done, applause to the council for the ordinance. Very happy, doesn't carry a full week or two weeks.
Yeah.
So good job, you guys.
Anyone else? Takes us to Personnel. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through H? Make a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through H?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Barr. I have a problem with our Jen Lynn Scott. I don't know why, it was about four weeks ago, we was in the executive session and came out, Linda Varval made a motion, Debra Johnson seconded it, to give our new upcoming chief that gets hired a raise. About two weeks later, we did a resolution to give our new, our present chief a raise, and now we're going to vote on it again. We hire a new chief, and it sounds like this one might be here up to six months. We hire a new chief, and if they're very qualified at all, they're going to be a top of scale, so we're going to be paying out $69.24 an hour for two chiefs to be working. I, 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 I don't have any words for that, I just can't believe we're doing something like that. We're all saying that, kind of money that we can't do things because of the road project, and all the money we're putting into the infrastructure and this and that, but we're doing things like this? Having two chiefs get $69.24 an hour? If we hire a new chief, in my opinion, we ought to let the old one go, because right on the next page, which I can wait to that, but now you want to pay her mileage, go one way, back to Nebraska? The taxpayers who pay in mileage for a person to go visit her husband in Nebraska? That's, I just can't believe we're doing something like this.
Yeah, I kind of agree with what Craig's saying.
Let's keep each of them separate, let's discuss the one in front of us, then we'll discuss the other one.
Well, figure it out, $69.24 an hour for two people to work, that's a lot of money, we're, I mean, if we hire a police chief that's qualified to be chief, why do we have to train him? Why does she have to sit here and train him, when we have a captain? We have other officers in town that know Hot Springs, know what's going on, and if this person is qualified enough to be chief, he ought to build around his own department. That's all I can say about that. I will not, never go along with this, this, I can't believe it.
It was my understanding that the six months was...
Part-time.
To give us enough time to find someone, and once they're here, then she'll no longer be coming.
Well, I know two people that, I don't know if they put in applications yet, but I know two people that it's going to, that's damn qualified. I mean, one of them has more qualifications than the whole police department.
Well, that's wonderful.
And he works for the police department right now, so.
Then we're still down another officer.
Well.
We can't fill the positions, and we're losing another one tonight, I thought we had covered. That's just such a, that's such a, I'm so upset about that, that she's not staying on.
And that's another thing, who's supposed to have them sign contracts? It's our chief, and she neglected to do that, and we want to pay her this kind of money to stay on?
I think we should stay on track with this.
Well, it is on track with this.
If there's other things to discuss, then we either need to table this, or, but we're starting to get into...
You all could...
We're starting to discuss personnel issues.
It was already brought up publicly, that's why I said something.
Well, that's fine from the public, but we, as a council, need to be careful what we discuss.
I do have a response to some of the things that Craig has brought up, but if council has any other comments that they would like to make, I can respond to those also.
Would it be possible to set aside B?
Well, you have a motion and a second at this point, unless anybody wants to amend it. Let me, let me share with council my thoughts. Craig has raised two issues about having two police chiefs on staff at the same time. I've never advocated for that, nor is there anything on this agenda that suggests that we're going to do that. He also accurately raised the issue about a motion that Linda had made regarding the new wage taking effect with the hiring of the new police chief. And that was discussed at the last council meeting. I'd asked if, when the motion was made, if anybody wanted to amend it to include changing to hiring with the new police chief. And that was discussed. The day after, I shared, have openly shared that that's on me. It's, the statement was made that I changed what the council wanted to have. In my mind, saying I changed it is suggesting that I was well aware of what you wanted to have happen, which I was. I disagreed with it, so I excluded the language to fit what I thought the language should be. I didn't do that. Misty wasn't with us for that executive session, so I neglected, if I did anything wrong, I did something wrong. What I did wrong was neglect to let Misty know that council wanted that particular language in the motion. I did not do anything to circumvent what you folks wanted to have happen, other than have a... have a stupid moment. But again, I offered, I asked if you wanted to have an amendment to that motion. No amendment was offered. Then there was a discussion about approving it. The motion was approved seven to one, six to one, I believe. So I went, I called everybody else on the council other than Craig. I knew how Craig felt about it. I respected how Craig felt about it. The remaining council, there was two additional council that wanted to have that, felt it was important to bring that resolution or that motion back in front of you. I could have brought, could have brought it back. We'd have been having the same discussion and it would have been the same vote to go forward with it. Five of the council were fine with the motion that's in front of you right now. But to the two chiefs, I agree with what Craig is saying. It would be ridiculous for us to hire, to have two full-time police chiefs on at the same time. I've never advocated for it. I've never suggested, it's never been a conversation. So to raise it as a possibility is disappointing.
So it's my understanding that when we do hire the next police chief, the present chief will then be, I don't want to say terminated.
Resign.
Resign. She'll resign as of that time.
Yes. The question has already been put to her. Depending on whether this motion is approved, when would her resignation take effect? If this motion is approved tonight, she said that her resignation will take effect July 31st. And then there's another motion, agenda item to deal with that. If the council does not approve the second item, having her as a part-time police chief, that her resignation would be effective around August 13th. So is there any more discussion on the motion in front of you to approve personnel actions A through H? Wes?
Can I add one quick thing?
Sure.
You're also forgetting, your police, your police captain is also making about 34 bucks an hour.
No, he's not.
Okay, 30, whatever. It's got to be 30, isn't it?
Yes, but 30 is not 34.
Okay, but you're still at 100 bucks an hour for three people. That's what you're going to be paying out. You people can kill this tonight by voting no. And then all you got to do is make a new motion to start this whole process. It's not that hard, people. You just vote no.
Any other questions, any other comments? So the motion in front of you is to approve personnel actions A through H. Miss T, would you call the roll, please?
Craig Romi?
No.
Linda Varvel?
No.
Melanie Wilson?
No.
Larry Pratt?
No.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Okay, you've just not approved all personal actions.
So...
So we're going to need a new motion.
Make a motion to approve A, C, D, E, F, G, H.
Second.
All right, so the motion in front of you is to approve personnel actions A, C, D, E, F, G, and H.
Not H. Did he say H?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Yes, I did.
All right. Miss T, would you call the roll, please?
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Linda Varvel?
Yes.
Melanie Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the motion passes. So personnel actions A, C, D, E, F, G, and H are approved. Personnel action B is not approved. All right. Takes us to ordinances. Second reading, ordinance A, second reading of ordinance 1241.
Make a motion to approve second reading ordinance 1241 supplemental appropriation ordinance.
Second. All in favor?
Oh.
No, thank you. Roll call.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Linda Varvel?
Yes.
Melanie Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, the motion passes. New business item A, possible motion discussion to accept the 2021 financial statements.
I make a motion to accept the 2021 financial statements and audit report as prepared and presented by Kettle Thornton Stunllp.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item B, possible motion discussion to set budget meeting dates.
I make a motion to set discussions, or discussion to set budget meeting dates for July 26th and July, or and 28th, beginning at 5:00 PM each day, with additional days to be added if needed, to be held at the Mueller Civic Center at 801 Sixth Street.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item C, possible motion discussion to authorize current police chief Wynn Scott to continue working.
Make a motion to authorize current police chief Wynn Scott to continue working for the city of Hot Springs as police chief in a part-time capacity until a new police chief is hired. Hours worked are not to exceed 39 hours per week or for six months. Also pay one round trip mileage cost per week necessary to commute from Sidney, Nebraska. This action will take effect with the official resignation of Chief Wynn Scott.
I got a question, though.
Second.
All right, discussion.
Is that you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So then she will get the, the round trip mileage, or is that still up for discussion?
That's part of the motion.
That's part of the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. I think she's bending over backwards to try to keep us covered, keep the process going, building up the police department by the plans that they've put forward and just trying to help with the changeover that's required.
So you think the taxpayers ought to pay for her drive down to Nebraska every time she goes back down there?
Well, in hospitals, when we're short of staff, we hire traveling nurses and doctors at twice the wages that what we pay our pres, our locals.
You pay their mileage, go home?
There's, it's all a package deal. It, it happens whenever you're short-staffed and you're trying to cover and keep someone here to fill the schedule and to keep.
That's all nice, but this isn't taxpayers' money.
Well, the thing, the thing we got to look at is if this was her choice, said, if she said, you know, I want to live in, in Sidney, Nebraska, but I still want to keep working, I believe it would be a different situation. Her husband was transferred by his company to another location. She reluctantly is leaving Hot Springs. She is willing to continue working with us in a time of need where we are short-staffed.
Right.
We are not paying her time while she's in transit. We are paying her mileage. She has done an extremely good job keeping the department going. The hours she's worked, the effort she has put, along with Captain Shively, in putting systems, processes together to, to not just have a group of officers that write tickets, but to try to put together a professional department. And we have a school resource officer that lives in Edgemont. We are not paying him mileage because it's not appropriate. This is a temporary situation. And we're not just saying, ah, it's nice to keep her around. We are short of officers. She is willing to do this for us. I think it's an appropriate reimbursable expense.
I don't, I don't think it's up to the taxpayers to pay mileage to her.
It's our responsibility to provide public safety services and we've got to look beyond...
It's our responsibility to listen to our taxpayers and, and spend their money properly.
Exactly. Which means providing the best police protection we possibly can. And if that involves paying mileage to an individual under extraordinary circumstances for a defined period of time, then that is proper stewardship of taxpayer money.
I don't think so.
I do.
I agree.
We disagree.
I guess we do. You know, like you say, we're paying a guy from Edgemont, you know, why aren't we paying him mileage one way?
Because nine months out of the year, he works at the school.
Okay, the school could help pay one, one way for him, too.
These are extenuating circumstances and we have to think outside the box in these times. And, you know, I give her huge kudos for trying to support, you know, our town and, and the work she's put in. And I mean, she's really held the fort for a long period of time due to inadequate staffing.
Because here's the risk we're going to run, folks. We have two officers that we need to send to the academy. If we don't have her to help fill the gap while they're at the academy, we cannot continue to work the people we have at the hours that we have been working. This is a wise, prudent, fiscally responsible choice. It's not throwing taxpayer dollars away. It's leveraging an, an existing investment. So we got to look beyond six inches in front of our nose and make a wise decision.
And it's supporting the rest of the police force so that we aren't burning them out more than we already are. So we have to support them as well through doing this.
And we ain't going to send two police officers to the academy at the same time.
No, we're not.
So can I have clarification? The, the last sentence in this paragraph says, "This action will take effect with the official resignation of Chief Wynn Scott." Okay? It was mentioned during the personnel action that her resignation date may be July 31st. So does this not take effect until after she resigns? Or am I reading that wrong?
No, this action would take effect with her resignation. July 31st.
Okay.
Because she's resigning as full-time police captain.
Okay.
Police chief. She would go into a part-time capacity until we can get a new police chief hired.
Okay. So her part-time capacity won't start until that resignation date?
Correct.
Okay.
If you accept this motion.
Yeah, I just needed some clarification there.
Yep.
Are we doing well with the application process of a new chief?
No.
We're not? Okay.
I've received one application.
We just posted it, though, right? Just got posted.
Yeah, last week.
Usually takes about 30 days.
Well, I know two people from this area that's applying.
Well, applying is different from applied. I've received one application.
I'm just saying, I know two that's going to. I'm not saying they did right away.
So for me, the, the elephant in the room, depending on where Wes was, was heading with his comments, you know, about how long are we going to continue to do this? There are people in the community who want combined law enforcement, are strong advocates for combined law enforcement. And the argument could be made that the struggles that we have been going through the last six months only point to the better, the easier solution. Throw our hands up and combine countywide law enforcement. I have said repeatedly that I'm not in favor of doing that, that law enforcement is one of the things that the citizens of Hot Springs expect the city of Hot Springs to provide We've seen that it's difficult to manage that, but at least if we have our own police department, we can address the issues that are in front of them. If it's countywide law enforcement, then we're counting on the sheriff's department and the county commissioners to address any problems that we have. And I would rather be in control of our problems and find a solution to our problems than to look to somebody else to try to fix them for us. I acknowledge that we have struggled with this. To Bill's point, the chief and the captain, I believe, were, were making great success. And when one half of a couple moves on, the other half of a couple moves on. So to somehow hold this against Chief Wynn Scott because she is supporting her husband and her family for moving on, I don't think is, is the right way to view this. She has offered to help us out, to get us through this, through her resigning. It's been mentioned, why aren't we hiring certified officers? Well, we did hire a certified officer under the old police chief, and he didn't make it six months. So to say that you get a, every time you get a certified officer, you're always going to get the better one, isn't always true. It's, each situation is different from the next one. So that's, that's my thoughts on that.
I think one thing we need to be careful, too, is not to get emotionally involved in this.
I agree.
We, we need to, you know, look at this as... One, one second, sir. Thank you. I just think that we need to, to, to look at this the way we need to look at it. You know, getting personally involved in this, I mean, she's done a great job, yes, I agree with that. Anything on here looks great, but I just don't feel like paying somebody back and forth is the right thing to do. And I'm not going to get my emotions involved in this. That's the reality of it for me.
All right, any other comments?
Do we know what the cost of a round trip travel mileage would cost?
When I check, I believe it's 185 miles.
I don't know, but I would like the motion to clarify that it's the state rate because that is different than the federal mileage rate. South Dakota, our state. Which is 42 cents per mile, and I don't know how far Sidney, Nebraska is. But I could do the math if somebody knew.
Three hours from here.
185, you thought?
I, I thought it was 185. It was under 400 miles round trip. It's certainly going to be less.
So one way is $77 if it's that much, so it'd be...
It will certainly be less than any overtime that we were given to fill the position. And ask already short-staffed officers to pick up more hours. So when you talk about the prudent thing to do as far as taxpayer dollars, we can burn out our officers in an effort to, you know, some may say save money. We're not going to save money when we start paying them overtime.
Well, we've been paying them overtime for how long now?
Longer than any of us would like.
And we're losing them because of it, too.
Yeah, I don't think it's all because of that.
We just need to be careful getting personnel.
Yep.
All right, any other comments? Any questions? All right, so is everybody clear on the motion? And Misty has asked, my words, not hers, for the motion to be amended to include mileage at the South Dakota state rate?
I will amend my motion to include mileage at the South Dakota state rate.
And I'll re-sec it.
Thank you.
All right, so is everybody clear on the motion that's in front of you? No additional questions? Miss T, would you call the roll, please?
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
No.
Linda Varvel?
No.
No.
Melanie Wilson.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
No.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
You have four yeses and three noes.
The motion passes. Thank you. Onto new business, item D. Possible motion discussion to authorize the public works engineer-
Possible motion to authorize the public works engineer Tracy Bastian to approve unanticipated construction costs directly related to the Highway 385 reconstruction project.
Second.
Discussion. So we talked a little bit about this at the last council meeting and that we would, because we were going up to South Dakota Municipal League Training in Rapid City the following day, we would put the question to Rod Fortin, who's with the Department of Legislative Audit. Craig had talked a little bit about it, that this type of motion would meet that need for Tracy to authorize those quick, unexpected expenditures that would be needed to keep the project moving on. So that's what this is all about, is giving Tracy the authority to do that. Spoke with each of you individually after the meeting on Wednesday to get your verbal feeling on whether you supported this motion so that he would be able to approve an expenditure if that happened before you actually give him the final authority.
Mayor, will you cover the two things he warned us of that Tracy is aware of and comfortable with, with the bid laws and the dollars available?
Can you see this blank word?
So my recollection of the conversation is that I thought that this was the appropriate way to handle that and cautioned us that we still have to be in compliance with bid laws.
Yes.
So he has to keep in mind as he's approving those, those dollar amounts that trigger different actions, and then also obviously that there are funds available. And Tracy is comfortable with both of those.
Yeah. The other things that we agreed to is that, to the point Misty's making, you know, if he was looking to make a $50,000 expenditure, then that's certainly something he would let me, need to let me know about so we could let you folks know. Huge expenses, still appropriate. And as he approves those expenditures, we had talked about, what's the best way to let you know, whether that be a memorandum or whatever? And I just feel the better way to do it is to have him attend a council meeting, the council, council meeting directly after whenever he approves an expenditure, to let you folks know what he did firsthand so that you can ask him questions about it. Those are the things that we agreed on. Rod had said this certainly isn't an uncommon thing to do. These types of things happen all the time. And the city engineer is the best person to have this authority. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. So new business, item E, we don't need. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. New business, item F. Possible motion discussion to authorize the finance officer to cash out.
Make a motion to authorize finance officer to cash out the maturing CD at First Interstate number 6801001077, 602 Water, and reissue the balance into a U.S. Treasury bond with the South Dakota FIT for a six-month term at 2.34%.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item G. A possible motion discussion to approve a plat of fellows tracks.
Possible motion to approve a plat of fellows track, Kaiser Track, Seagres Track 1, Seagres Track 2, Muller Track, Hatch Track, and Haynes Track, all located in Block 18 Fargo Prentice's addition to Hot Springs Fall River County, South Dakota. Formerly lots 30 through 60, less the north 17th feet of said lots vacated Catholican Avenue coincident to lots 30 through 34, and the north 17th feet of Catholican Avenue platted with this plat coincident with lots 35 through 60.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question. No offense.
None taken.
Should you not abstain from this?
I am not, I don't have a conflict of interest with that because that-
You don't own it no more?
No, no.
Benny does?
Benny, Benny and Wade have that.
But is Benny your uncle?
Yeah, he's my uncle, but I have no monetary gain from it at this point.
I just wanted to ask.
Yeah.
So for those folks who have been around a while, this one goes back to-
1965.
Late 50s, mid to late 50s.
Yeah.
When the city decided to widen Fresno Avenue. Craig's shaking his head, so I'm still on track. So to do that, they took 17 feet from each of the property owners on the north end of their property. The agreement was that they would get that 17 feet back on the south end. And three or four years ago, if anybody remembers, Catholican had some work done to it because there was a new renter that had bought the old March property. And the access that had been allowed to the March property was not in Catholican, it was actually on private property. So when we looked at providing the access and we worked with the Ham Radio Club, there was some agreement that the radio club would get a portion of Catholican Avenue. And then the rest of the folks said, well, when do we ever get our 17 feet back? And there was some confusion about whether it ever got recorded correctly or not. So this takes care of that. This finally gives those, those folks the necessary documentation at the county level that they get that property back that they were promised back in the late 50s.
Council will still approve the deeds. Will do quitclaim deeds after this to transfer the ownership into each of their names.
Okay.
Garland has to prepare those after you approve the plat.
So this is your first step?
So is there any of Catholican left to go to the March? Is that, that little strip still going to be Catholican that goes to the March property?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, the Ham Radio Club did not get all of Catholican.
Well, it's actually Baker property now.
Oh, the radio, ham?
No, the March property is actually Baker property right now.
Oh, okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Fresno is not an avenue, it's an alley.
Yeah, it was supposed to be.
It, it started out as an alley, and then when it got widened with that 17 feet from the homeowners, it became an avenue then. It's not as wide as my street in front of my house, but-
All right. So what we call Fresno isn't important to the action you're taking right now?
Yep.
You're giving them the official 17 feet back that they were promised back in the late 50s.
Yes, that's good.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, counsel, this one's huge. New business, item H. Possible motion discussion to acknowledge the notification of raffle.
Make a motion to acknowledge the notification of raffle from Empower Coalition of the Southern Hills Inc. to raise funds for Toys for Kids program during a poker-run fundraiser to be held on 7/30/22 at American Legion 1045 Jennings Avenue.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item I. Possible motion discussion to authorize finance officer to move $2,151.80.
Make a motion to authorize the finance officer to move $2,151.80 from the 101 General Fund to the 501 Capital Improvement Fund and restrict those funds for baseball slash T-ball improvements. 501-26424.
Second.
Discussion. Misty, we've done this the last several years. This is the instructors donating their salary and wages back.
Yeah, we, instead of paying them, they volunteer, and the amount that we've saved in their hourly rate, we transfer to the 501 fund, and then they designate those dollars to improvements for baseball and T-ball. Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item J. Possible, possible motion discussion to approve travel training request.
Possible motion discussion to approve travel training request from police officer training coordinator Ross Norton to attend the TASER Energy Weapon Instructor, Instructor Course in Rapid City on July 28, 22.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm sorry, was the second Larry, Craig, thank you.
You do sound like Larry.
It was kind of loud for Larry, so I wasn't sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Takes us on to committee reports. Administrative and finance. JR, Melanie?
Excuse my reporting, I don't think my mind was really there today. Still not here, but I'll put down and let everyone correct me where I'm sufficiently wrong. The admin finance met today at 1 o'clock at the Mueller Civic Center. Present was Misty Summers-Walden, Deb Johnston, Melanie Wilson, and myself. Old business, Fall River Highway Field System repairs in agreement. CA, review draft attorney prepared and discuss next steps. We recommend to leave it as is, but to have the county agree to communicate any large expenses. With item number 2 under old business, ARPA $633,321. First trench and first supplemental have been received. $313,125.48 plus $3,535.83, which equals $316,662.25. Funds will be covered to use and used to cover expenses related to water, wastewater infrastructure improvements. Wastewater $252,165,000. Digestor lid, $108,491 for the lid paid, and $143,636.7370 installed unpaid. Wastewater $97,500. Clarifier arm has paid. And water, $550,000 to $600,000 estimate. Additional water line needed for the Dale's Family Restaurant to Menacata. Second half of the trench has not been received. Dollars exceed the trench money. Estimated for new water line from Dale's to Menacata is now $550,000 to $600,000. Misty's keeping track of those. Additional costs related to water and wastewater replacement, road project, ongoing review and discussions are necessary. Gauge installation at city shop propane tank that was tabled. Water usage and sales at the airport, crop spraying, seaplane, $7.50 per 1,000 gallons. Forwarding to airport committee to recommend a fee recommendation. Under new business, review monthly finance officer reports. All of June has not been posted. Majority has. The figures will change accordingly. Counsel is reminded that a review of claims is a must prior to approval. And draft audit report was given tonight by Tracy Hanson. Committee member items, there were none. 2023 budget process, excuse me, progress. Budget info from all departments is due by July 15th for the hearings. Counsel will receive the budget packets a week before the hearings. Updates, PD Homeland Security grant for five mobile computers. Initial cost estimates all paid by Homeland Security Grant, $64,500. Ongoing added expenses, $5,800 estimated. No updates. Community access road grant, streets around school update, no updates. Review attorney, attorney cannabis application email and recommended, and recommended ordinance revisions. Admin finance, PNZ, and public safety to review. SDML elected official workshop option to purchase recorded workshop. Committee recommends purchasing the webinar. City employment application. Discussed what should and should not be on the city application form. It's under review with the police and the EEOC. The meeting adjourned to 2:43 today. Next meeting is August 1st at 1 PM at Mueller Civic Center. Misty?
You did a fine job.
Did a good job, exactly.
Melanie?
Got it all.
Thank you, JR. Melanie?
Thank you.
Airport advisory, Bill?
Uh, next airport advisory committee meeting is Thursday, July 14th, 8:30 at the airport. And just a reminder, this is a one-time date change to the second Thursday of the month. So again, July 14th, 8:30 at the airport.
Thank you. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Larry?
The next meeting will be the 14th of July here at the Mueller Center, 7 PM. It'll be the annual meeting.
Thank you. Historic preservation, Deborah?
Uh, we meet tomorrow, Wednesday, the 6th, 5 PM here at the Mueller Civic Center.
Thank you. Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
We meet July 14th at noon at the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs.
Thank you. Parks Recreation, Larry?
We're meeting tomorrow here at the Mueller Center at 2 PM. Everyone's invited.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Deborah?
Um, planning and zoning meets Wednesday, the 20th, at 7 PM at City Hall.
Thank you. Public safety, Bill?
Public safety will meet Thursday, July 14th, 2 PM here at the Mueller Center. And again, this is a one-time date change. We'll be meeting on the second Thursday of the month instead of the first.
JR, anything you want to add?
No, I do not.
Thank you, gentlemen. You're going to have plenty of time, Misty.
Uh-huh. I like it.
Public works, Craig?
Present was myself, Mayor Nelson, Jeff, Deborah Johnston, Tracy, and Mrs. Brown. Sounds like a Hummin's Hummer song. New business. We is looking at the streets in town that need new blacktop put on there. Billy's putting a list together. He has like four so far. Street Department Maintenance, Boardwalk Hill. They plan on working it on the top of it sometime in August. That's when they can get somebody to lay the blacktop. They'll, they'll get it ready to go, and we'll get somebody to do the concrete work and, 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 uh, not Hills. Simons will do the blacktop. The drainage on, on Valleyview Drive, they plan on doing that as soon as they have time. They're kind of busy right now with, with the road project and stuff and other things. The wall behind, the wall by, in by the river, we are trying to figure out what we can put on it because we've had a few people complain it's so small. They had a couple of dogs jump over the, the wall and stuff, and they're afraid kids will fall off there. What's, yeah, it's, it's short enough, it could, so we're working on finding out what we could put up. Tracy's kind of looking into it. Utilities Department, the lid will be put on down to, at, uh-
Treatment plant?
Yeah, treatment plant in July. Thank you. Code enforcement, the guy was in town again. We had a meeting with, with the gentleman, and things are going forward. A lot of people don't like it, but they're going forward. Okay, old business, Fall River cleanup, July 11th. Supposed to start July 11th, from what I understand. See what happens. Like the micro pile drilling- Like the micro pile drilling, like Bob mentioned, it's supposed to be done by the end of the week, but they wasn't working on it today, the icing. So maybe they're going to get really busy tomorrow. Battle Mountain Road needs millions. Billy's going to do that soon because the millions are paid for and it's been warm enough that they'll stick now. So Battle Mountain Road, we're taking that off. It has nothing to do with the city hot springs. Icing spot at Vision Source. We're going to do it when the state goes by. They don't know if the state project can go that far down the street. If not, the city's going to do it while the state's doing their project right there. So. Police Agreement with Simons. I talked to the gentleman at Hills, at Simons twice and they gave me a number of the big boss in Rapid. I'm supposed to call him tomorrow. Contracted city snow removal. We're still waiting on Jeff to get ahold of Dave and I. Summit Road, the wall. We decided at this point, it seems that we don't have enough money for a fence. We're going to put up signs and see if that will work for a while. Fire hydrant pressure on Edgewood Terrace needs a new water line. Water line isn't big enough. That's why they don't have pressure. It's a four-inch line and they need at least a six-inch line and it's a block long that they have to replace. And the city's going to try to do it themselves. Tree and Alley at Catholic Church. Billy's going to work on that this fall. He's really busy right now. When they're cutting trees and stuff, I guess he's going to just cut that down and haul it out. Need new light pole, truck bypass. The one to the north, they're going to move to the south because one in the south got hit and evidently the guy that hit it can't pay for. So the one up north isn't really used because there's so many up there. So we talked to the state and they're going to have light maintenance moving for them. Community Garden update. Debra gave us an update and she did a good job. She said some of the beds and stuff are put in. They got people that rented them and the fence is going up or is it already up?
The fence is up. They're working on gates and we have three water spigots installed.
Cool. Thank you, Debra. Clubhouse retaining wall, it's on hold for now until future, future plans, I guess. And that's it. We talked about the bump out. We talked about the bump outs along the main street, but not really got into them. That's what Mrs. Brown is there for, the bump outs. And Keep Hot Springs Beautiful. But didn't we talk about the bump outs? Didn't we talk about the one by the... Okay. Bob's giving me a look like he don't want to talk about it. So evidently I don't either.
We did a little bit about the one that's going to, the little mini park that'll be across from Lynn's Dakota Mart.
Yeah.
But there wasn't really a whole lot that we can do until it gets done.
Until they're done using it.
Apparently there's a, a planting plan that has been approved for that.
You didn't call it a park. You called it a part. Okay.
No, it's, it's kind of a mini park. That's what I said, but it's a bump out. It's an island.
They're going to take care of it, but...
We wouldn't encourage children to play in the middle.
No.
But it's, it's more than a bump out. It's a big, it's a big island.
There's a road that goes on both sides of it.
Yeah, I've seen how big it's supposed to be.
It's going to be nice, I think.
Yeah, but I think they have a planting plan that...
I didn't hear that.
Is going forward. I'm not sure.
Because they have to give it to Rich Socker, right? And he has to approve it? Isn't it Rich that approves those?
It's not Rich, but yes, the plan has been, it was given to Rich. Rich moved it up the line.
Oh, okay.
And the plan has been approved by the state.
Cool. Maybe that's going to be on our next agenda because I haven't heard that yet. Our next meeting's July 12th, 1 o'clock, Mueller Center. Everybody's welcome.
Any questions for Craig? Just a couple of updates since we had the meeting. The railing that Craig was talking about on the west side of the flood channel from Menicata Bridge north, that's been identified as an issue that there needs to be something there. There currently isn't. One of the discussions was to use the railing that comes down where the new suspended sidewalk will go in. It's not just a matter of using that because it doesn't meet new construction guidelines. It's too wide. Somebody could still fall through it. So what we've been talking about doing is working with the contractor who's making some railing for the state to go on the north end of North River Street from where the suspended sidewalk will end to Menicata Avenue and use that particular design for the railing from Menicata Bridge north. Tracy has already gotten a distance. I think he said it's about 380 feet of railing that will be needed and he'll be giving that information to the folks that are making the railing for the state. So we'll have a cost available to put in front of you folks. The Fall River Cleanup that Craig had mentioned, starting on the 11th. Craig, Dave and I will need to meet with the folks that have the plan for cleaning it up and just let them know what our expectations are for getting it taken care of. Council approved having a truck available for them to put the, the stuff in that they remove from the river. So we'll have to coordinate with them to get that done. They're starting the work this Sunday or this Saturday. Our, our city crews aren't doing any of the work. So we'll just have to figure out if there's someplace where we want them to place their, what they bring out or will we put a city truck there for them to put those in. So that's a discussion that's ongoing. The micro piles that Craig had talked about, I'll say a little more about them in my mayor's report, but the ECI is the subcontractor that's doing the, the drilling and they expect to be done with the micro pile drillings on Friday.
Just, just to clarify for myself, the railing will go from Menicata, by Menicata Bridge to the end of the pavement that you're talking about in front of the inbounded river?
Until the wall.
Or all the way through?
No, not all, but until the wall's high enough to where it's safe so nobody falls off.
Okay, okay.
Tracy had mentioned that 380 feet is past the cabins that are there, closer to the, to the homes that are down there.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Craig. Jeff isn't with us, so skip committee report J and City Administrator Report. Misty, Finance Officer Report?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel was provided the following financial reports and they are through the 29th of June. So due to timing, it doesn't reflect the entire month. Same reports you're used to seeing, your year-to-date profit and loss summary report, the fund summary report, which shows you budget versus actual for revenue and expenses by fund, cash balance report and investment reports. What I'd point out on your profit and loss by fund year-to-date is we had not yet posted all the receivables for the payments we received for our utilities, which include water, wastewater and solid waste. So you see red in all those funds and then you see very small revenues for the month while missing that day misses getting those posted. So that will update. Then on your fund summary budget to actual report, I'd point out obviously expenditures in the water and wastewater fund and the capital improvement fund with the projects that we've had look very high year-to-date. On your cash balance report for the Wells Fargo account, it would point out that we are aware of the negative amount in 501 Hot Springs Capital Improvements and the ever-decreasing balances in the water and wastewater fund. On the back of that cash balance report is the current balances in our Bank of the West account and that's where we have the significant funds sitting for the sidewalk. By the end of the year, I'll most likely be recommending that the city close out that account and we put those funds into the Wells Fargo account for usage. So we'll take care of that negative amount by the end of the year. Now, that's just a fund that has a negative amount. We're allowed to accumulate these. So in total, obviously the account's not in the hole and we won't let it get there. So we're watching and monitoring those. And then on your certificates of deposit listing or CD listing, the thank you for voting tonight, the water CD that was at First Interstate, we'd really like to leave it there, but the excellent rates that South Dakota Fit is offering with the US Treasury rates for short-term money is so much greater than what the local banks are giving us for CDs that we are choosing to close that one out to take advantage of the higher interest rates, but we'll keep checking with all of our banks each time something comes up. On the report, the other information I've provided is the annual report, financial statements and complete audit. It's now been distributed and approved. This important information represents the public disclosure of our operating and financial activities over the past year. Now that the report has been accepted, I'll start the work on notifying our bond rating agencies and our lenders for debt compliance, getting it submitted to the DLA and getting it updated on the city website and that report published in the newspaper as required. Thank you for approving the two dates for the budget planning meetings. Although they start at 5, they usually last several hours. We are hoping they don't go past 9 on any given night, but the second night, if needed, we can add a few more hours or we can add a third night. As JR mentioned in his report, I am asking that the 10 meetings that Jeff is organizing with the department heads to work on their budget requests that I have at no later than July 15th, so I can work on the input of those figures into the Excel spreadsheets and the accounting software to generate the reports that we use to present to you and discuss the preliminary budgets. Hope to have those to you by the 21st of July, so they have plenty of time to review that before we sit down and have our budget hearings together. But for those of you that have been through it before, we go through each item anyway, even if you review it in advance. So. The Elected Officials Workshop that was scheduled, JR mentioned that after they came out with the agenda for the workshop and the request to RSVP, they did, this is new for the municipal league, they offered for the first time the ability to attend by Zoom at the time of the meeting and also the opportunity for communities to purchase the workshop to be viewed at our leisure. And we discussed the value of that and have requested that we look into that, see how much the cost is and see if we can exchange the two registrations to attend in person to purchase that and then we can share it with everyone. I've always wanted to attend that workshop, but it really doesn't have much to do with me and it's around the same time as the Finance Officer and HR schools, which I prioritize over that. So I'm thankful that they're looking at other ways to deliver this information. It'll be interesting to see how much, one, that they charge and then how much interest we have from our council to utilize that information and maybe be more available to you so you don't have to travel to get it. This is usually the time of year we welcome new council members and I take the opportunity to discuss the very important responsibility of the review and approval of claims. None of you are new, but I still thought it was a good idea, especially after our budget workshops, to talk about that task and still give you a little reminder about it. Takes more than just rubber stamp approval. And I've been getting a lot of great questions and I really appreciate it. As a general rule, a claim report that I give you should contain enough information, enough detailed information for you to make a favorable determination, but that's not always the case. And although we review, audit and enter the claims, the ultimate approval is your responsibility. So if you have questions, if you're reviewing the information and you need more information to be comfortable when approving claims, I'm always available for them and I have no issues answering those questions. And I never think a question is out of line or inappropriate. It's a huge responsibility to approve the claims and I'm here to help support that. So please ask any and all questions you have. And that's all I have for my report. Thank you.
Any questions for Misty? Thank you. Well, I'm a little conflicted at this point. We're making great time and I'm not sure how I'm going to get us to 9 o'clock because my report's very brief. So first, I want to let council know about a change to the second bridge from the suspended sidewalk to just north of the ban shell on the west side of Fall River. Last week, the city found out the foundation for the bridge will need to be moved to avoid Golden West fiber optic cables that run along the edge of the flood channel. The micro piles for the foundation will be moved about five feet, which means the bridge will also need to be lengthened. Core Construction, the contractor for the suspended sidewalk, has contacted the firm designing the bridge and they have been told to expect an increase in cost of $8,000 to $20,000. I'll let council know once a more accurate cost is available. And finally, I want to personally thank all the folks that were involved with making this pass 4th of July weekend so successful. First, the past, first, the past veterans that have served and future veterans that will serve our country to keep us safe and free. Keep Hot Springs Beautiful and their volunteers for once again spraying weeds along city sidewalks to spruce them up. The folks with the Free Street Dance, everyone with the Firecracker 5,000, 10,000 and Mile Race, 5,000, or 5,000K, 10, uh, 10K, 5K, 10K, Mile Race. The 4th of July Parade, the Chamber Picnic, the Hot Springs Cruiser Show and Shine, Firecracker Duck Race, the National, the Nebraska National Guard Free Concert, the United States Air Force for their B1 flyover and our city staff for a fantastic fireworks display. All of these folks came together as they do every year to make our country's birthday a huge success. And again, thank you to all of them. I appreciate it. So if you have, do you have any questions for me? In particular about the, the new micro piles, the moving of the micro piles? Went up and showed Craig what needed to happen there. The, the fibers, coincidentally, are right where the old micro piles were originally designed to be drilled, so they had to move.
Are we doing anything with that tree?
The tree has been moved. There was a large tree, you know, closer to the, the north pavilion that the arborist that the city uses had declared diseased and said it had to come down. So last week, the city crews cut that tree down and prepared a hole in the ground to receive the little tree. So they moved that last week.
Great.
They've been watering it. It is showing some signs of stress. Imagine that.
With this 100-degree, 90-degree weather, it's not the opportune time.
It needs a hug.
It needs a hug.
I'd like to thank the state office for letting us use their tree spade.
Yep. Yeah, thank you for that. So if you don't have any questions for me, we made a motion to go into executive session and there will be no action after the executive session.
Mayor? I'd like to say one thing to the citizens, to the citizens of Hot Springs. Thank you for coming out to vote and thank you for voting for me. I appreciate it.
I make a motion that we go into executive session, SDCL 1-25-2-1, personnel.
Second. Discussion?
I got a question. When are we going to talk about this or not?
No. There were two questions regarding that in the bills. Two questions from council regarding that particular bill and that's the reason why that was there.
I was just wondering if we was going to see if the county would pay half of it.
Okay, so we have a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
You got one, Larry?
Oh, Larry's second. Oh, okay.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And again, for the public, there won't be any action taken after executive session.
And Mayor?
All back at 8:58. All right, everyone's back. Need a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Misty? If I could chat with you before you go home?
Okay.